All right, good evening and welcome to the June 4th meeting of the Hickory City Council. I would like to welcome each and every one of you to this evening's meeting. At this time, I would ask the Reverend Steve Caldwell from Mountain Zion Baptist Church to the podium for our invocation, and I would ask that if you're able to please stand and remain standing after the invocation for our pledge of allegiance. Thank you Reverend Caldwell for being here this evening.
Thank you, it's raining outside.
I understand.
Right in here. Our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done in earth as it is in heaven. To God we thank you for waking us up early this morning, allowing us to be clothed and in our right mind. We thank you for safe trip up and down the dangerous highways today, protecting us from dangers that were seen and dangers that were not seen. Lord, as we are gathered here together tonight, we ask for your grace, we ask that your mercy will prevail tonight. Lord, help us to be about our fathers business, but most of all be better citizens, better husbands, better wives. Lord, help us to be what you have us to be, Lord. We pray for this meeting tonight, even if we don't always see eye to eye, Lord, help us at the end of the day be concerned about Hickory, North Carolina. We thank you for our troops, we thank you for our police officers, we thank you for our first responders who keep us all safe. We say to God be the glory and to God be the praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we have a very special presentation this evening from a very special presenter. So at this time, I would like to ask Dr. Philip Green, the CEO of Frye Regional Medical Center, to the podium for his presentation of the 2023 Community Benefit Report. Dr. Green, thank you for being here this evening.
Mayor Guest, thank you so much. Honorable council members, thank you for allowing us this time just to present some of the stuff that is going on just down the street from you, and I'll just say I appreciate you having a photo of the hospital up on the wall there, so it helps us with our presentation as well. So I'm going to run through a few slides, just talking through what we do for this community to give you a better picture of the impact that Frye has on the community here. So I'm going to run through a few slides here, just to talk a little bit about who we are. So Frye is a part of the Duke LifePoint family of hospitals, which encompasses hospitals from North Carolina all the way up to the Upper Peninsula of Michigan. As you all know, Frye has been a hospital in this community since, it's really crazy to say it, but since 1911, so we're over 100 years old.
Many people in this building were probably born there.
That's right, that's right. I had a great conversation with a doc in the community who said, when I started to deliver the grandchildren of babies I had delivered, I knew it was time to retire, and I think Dr. Frye could probably say the same thing. But we are a 355-bed acute care hospital with services encompassing both neurosurgery, cardiovascular surgery, cardiology, general surgery, orthopedics, Level III NICU, and a women's center. We also have a 32-bed emergency department, a 29-bed inpatient rehab unit, a 15-bed surgical suite, and an 81-bed psychiatric hospital just down the road. In our community of providers, we have 80 employed physicians, and on one of the other slides you'll see that we have over 455 physicians that are on staff at Frye. This is our leadership team, myself, Lyndi White, our Chief Operating Officer, John Bostwick, who is our Chief Financial Officer, Bridget Denzick, who is our Chief Nursing Officer, and Rebecca Artman, who is our Assistant Chief Nursing Officer in a training program with our hospital. Our Board of Trustees is chaired by Dr. Peter Bradshaw, most of you probably know his name, he's been in the community a long time, and we have representation both from our physician community, as well as from our partner at Duke, and Dr. Fred Witt from Lenora Rhine. The hospital is, has a dedicated compassionate team, 1,460 employees, 81 of those are physician or advanced practice employees, and as I mentioned, 445 affiliated members of our medical staff. This is a great photo, you may recognize Mark Ischak, one of our neurosurgeons to the center left in the photo, but our mission as a hospital is making our community healthier, both through investing in the community as well as the well-being of our community. Our core values, we'll go over here in a little bit, but really providing compassionate, accessible care to patients and their family. And we look at our community as beyond just the Catawba Valley region, we really aspire to be a regional referral center, and we were just talking before the meeting about the helipad that's now up and running on the top of our parking garage, that has been able to serve patients from outside the direct area of Hickory for some of the services that we provide. These are all of our locations, just to give you an idea of the breadth of where we operate, from Boone all the way down to Rutherfordton, we have offices, and quite a few offices in the Hickory area, including family practice and our subspecialty care practices, including an urgent care over in Conover. So to talk about why we do what we do, I mentioned our mission is to make communities healthier, and that is always the primary focus of what we do, but we do that through our vision, which is to be a place where people want to come for health care, patients choose to come there, where our providers are excited to come practice their craft every day, and where our employees want to come to work. We launched a group of core values about two years ago, which I was a part of crafting these core values at the national level for the company, and I think these core values, I always emphasize to our new employees, these core values aren't just words on a paper, these core values are felt and believed all the way to the top of the company in Nashville, and that is to champion the patient care that we provide, doing the right thing, that's one of my favorites, embracing individuality, acting with kindness, and making a difference together. So great core values for us to guide, and these principles guide us in every decision that we make. We're excited to see some expansion, both in our community with 297 new lives birthed at our hospital in 2023, and we just added two additional providers into this practice, and our first nurse midwife in our Lenora office, so we're likely to see that number grow every year or so, additional lives coming into the Hickory community. Our emergency department served 31,875 patients in 2023, and we're also likely to see growth in that volume this year, as well as we improve our services, as well as our throughput in our emergency department. I'd like to talk about the care that we provide and why it's so important, and you know, Mayor Guest was at our launch of our helipad, and some of the feedback we got with that was, we know what Frye does here, but really does the community outside of Frye know what we do, and do they have access to that care, and that's why that helipad was so important. But we've always been known as the hospital that does that subspecialty care, we've had cardiovascular surgery for over 30 years, neurosurgery for nearly the same amount of time, and those are service lines that we're committed to continuing, even though in a hospital of this size, that's somewhat rare to have a hospital with only 355 beds that does those service lines, but we feel like it's important to our community, important to those patients that show up, because we've all lived in Catawba County long enough to know that even though Charlotte's close, we don't really want to go there too often unless we have to, and so you take a patient at the worst moment of their life, when they show up in the emergency department with a cardiovascular emergency, and we tell them, well, we're going to send them down to Charlotte, and here's directions on how to get there, or we replay that story and we say, we can take care of you right here at home. And so it's why it's so important to me, and why I support this mission, and why we aspire to continue to keep these certifications and these high-quality measures up to speed. So I just listed a few on this page for you to review. So we talk about what quality means and how do we achieve quality within the hospital, and I think it's really important to think about how quality evolves in a hospital system, and probably the most important piece of this is everyone has a voice, and so we make it very clear to our staff that no matter what's going on, that it's so important for you to have a voice and speak up when you see things that we can improve, but we also really listen to our patients and understand what they need and understand what the community needs, and safety is our highest priority when it comes to our patient care. We also feel it's very important for us to be out there recruiting top-notch physicians, and I will tell you, Hickory as a community has made my job a lot easier, because 25 years ago, Hickory was a different town, and today Hickory is a very attractive place for people to relocate, and so I don't have to do a really extensive sales job on why Hickory's a great place to live. Of course, everybody's advertising Hickory's a great place to live, and they hear that coming in, but they see it when they come here, and so I appreciate all of the work that the city has done to make Hickory such a wonderful place to live, but it makes it easier to recruit folks to this town, and we've had some great success getting critical care, sports medicine, family medicine, gastroenterology, infectious disease, I can go on and on with all of the physicians that have decided to relocate to Hickory and make this their home. We've got a great staff, I mentioned the 1,460 employees, we help them out with some professional development, every year we spend over $500,000 on professional development, and over $130,000 on tuition reimbursement, because we feel like it's important for us to continue to develop our staff into the high-quality staff that we know we need to take care of our patients. We also celebrate our staff in many ways, and this is probably our most important award as a community of hospitals. If any of you know Tanisha Mitchell, you'll know why she got this award for 2023, she is such a light to our community and does great work in our occupational therapy department, and she is our lead in our lymphedema treatment area, and if you know anybody that's suffered with lymphedema, you know how important it is to get that disease process under good control, and she does it with such a great heart, and so this award is a national award given by LifePoint, and they select one person throughout the entire organization. We've had one that's won the national award, Tanisha was second this year on the award, and we're really excited for her. So I mentioned the 1,460 people, we do an employment multiplier to really give an idea of what that does from the standpoint of the impact on the community, and that equals out to about 2,964 jobs in the community provided by the employees that we have working for us. We also look at our payroll impact, and our $139 million in payroll and benefits equals about 229 million in impact on the community, and we also serve JD's Barbecue from time to time, and that's a great picture of us serving JD's Barbecue in the parking lot. We do that for our EMS staff every year, and when you say JD's, they show up, just what happens. From the standpoint of our charity and uncompensated care, 2023 saw us deliver $72 million in charity care to our community. And, oop, this slide kind of got a little messed up on the, I just have a list of all of the organizations that we either sponsor or serve through donations, which includes everybody on that list, Corner Table, the YMCA, the Service League, Salvation Army, and quite a few others. Our tax base that we contribute is about $24 million every year, both in property taxes, provider taxes, payroll taxes, as well as sales tax, so we consider that our additional contribution to the community. We are financially strong, you know, we benefit as a company through the larger scale that we're able to provide through the LifePoint organization, and I think that helps us keep our costs down, but it also helps us navigate some of the more complex pieces of health care and the regulatory environment that we find ourselves in, because as with any industry, health care has become increasingly complicated, and we are committed as a company to remaining compliant and with the highest quality standards of ethics and regulatory compliance, and so we have a great team that works on that for us. And finally, just talking a little bit about what's next, we had a bit of a chat earlier before the meeting about some of our work in the cardiovascular section. We've done a lot of great work, we've brought online the Watchman Procedure, which is a device that can be inserted in the heart to help reduce the risk of stroke in patients with atrial fibrillation. We're about to do our first case of a closure of the atrial septal defect, and then in the end of June, we're going to launch our TAVR program, which is replacing the aortic valve through a catheter-based approach. So really exciting stuff coming to Hickory and to our community, and again, it's just our commitment to bringing that high-quality, cutting-edge technology to this community. In our neurosurgery and spine section, we have a Globus robot, which is a robotic approach to doing spine surgery, which helps our surgeons do a minimally invasive approach to that spine surgery, and again, just trying to keep up with the technology and bring those things to bear here. We've done a lot of renovations on our south campus to bring that up to code for the joint commission, and we have opened up the last of our 81 beds to be fully occupied on the south campus, and then this year we did launch our North Carolina Bariatric Institute, which is our combination of both medical and surgical weight loss for patients in the community, so a lot of great, great work going on, and even more to come in 2024. So I'll stop, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Are there any questions for Dr. Green?
I don't have a question, just a comment, you know, we talked a lot about quality of life here, and you know, healthcare is, I mean, the foundation of that, I mean, it's the cornerstone of it, so I just want to thank you for everything you're doing, everybody at Frye, because, you know, it's essential, I mean, having high quality, the availability of high-quality healthcare is essential, so thank you for everything you're doing.
Absolutely, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Echo what Councilman Wood said, we're very fortunate to have Frye Hospital as a partner and as part of our community, there's probably not very many people in this room that haven't had to use the services that were available there, I know I've used them, my family's used them, and it's always been a pleasant experience, and we're glad to have you in our community.
Thanks, thank you all so much.
Thank you, appreciate you.
They saved his life. All right, next on the agenda is persons requesting to be heard at every council meeting. We allow an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council, we just ask that you approach the podium and that you state your name and address, and that you limit your conversation to three minutes or less. At this time, we have one person who has signed up to speak, it's not necessary for you to sign up to speak, but that opportunity is available if you would like to sign up in advance. So at this time, I'll ask Ms. Crystal Miller to the podium, and for the record, if you would please, once again, state your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes to address the council.
Thank you, my name's Crystal Miller, I'm the property manager across the street of One North Center Apartments, I also live there, One North Center Street, Hickory, North Carolina, 28601. If you could please let me know when my three minutes is up.
You're good, go ahead.
Okay, I have a few issues here that I'd like to present. My first one is a main concern about surrounding businesses and people using our dumpster illegally, it's causing an issue where it's being overloaded primarily by Randolphs. I have gone over and spoken to them about it, and I was assaulted by the owner and his daughter. I had to call the police, but I was too afraid to press charges because I was afraid I would lose my job, so I have left them alone. Since then, I've seen other businesses, I have photos here, I've seen vehicles plub, and I've gotten license plate numbers. Using our dumpster, residents are fed up with it, it's just, I have, people are leaving their labels, businesses across from the coffee shop, or leaving their labels on their boxes, filling our dumpster up, and just, the city will not pick our dumpster up if it is overflowing. I have our invoice here, we pay $943.25 a month for that to be picked up, and it's not fair that apparently the city is telling all these surrounding businesses that our dumpster is theirs. Our residents know this, and all these surrounding businesses are using our dumpster, I don't know why, and I've worked at a property before where this has happened, and it's got to stop. We pay for that dumpster, and I'm coming to you guys first, I've talked with Officer Mayhew, who is code enforcement, I've done nothing but take photos, and I was on PTO, and me and Valley Trash had to spend 15 minutes to go through all that trash by hand to get it, so that the trash will be picked up. So it's got to stop. I cannot go back to Randolphs, I will not go back there.
Three minutes.
Okay.
Did you have any other issues besides the dumpster, ma'am?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we extend your time.
Second.
If you will move along.
Okay.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, continue.
Recently, with our residents, they have always been allowed on the second floor, the parking area on the second floor behind Kawasaki and Frothy Rooster behind our courtyard, that is where we have always had for the past three years since build, that's where we assign them to have their move-in trucks move in. Recently, we all know that there was a mad ticket lady, she does her job very well, but recently she ticketed one of our move-ins, their move-in trucks, and apparently now they're saying, she's saying there's some weight limit, I don't know, all of a sudden after three years, they have nowhere else to put their move-in trucks. We are fine with having Kawasaki, the restaurants have them move their trucks elsewhere to bring their packages in, that's fine, but our residents have nowhere else to move in. That's the best way for them to move in, they simply pull it in on the side, it's not blocking traffic or anything, but that's the best way for them to move in, and for them to get ticketed or to not be able to move in, they have no other option. So that needs to be addressed as well. So I'm here for our residents, for three years it's been fine, and all of a sudden she tickets one, after three years, all of a sudden, it can't be a weight issue, it's been three years. So I'm here on behalf of my residents.
Okay.
I've been doing this for 19 years. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe Captain Demas and Steve could talk to her out in the lobby about, seems like most of those things are related to...
Yes, ma'am, we have some officers present, and I'm sure they'll be happy to discuss your issues with you at this time or some other time, they'll make arrangements for that. All right, next item on the agenda is, oh, I'm sorry, is there anyone else present that maybe didn't know that you had this opportunity that would like to address the All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our regular meeting of May the 21st, 2024. All right, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Item number seven on the agenda is reaffirmation and ratification on second readings, and once again, I'll entertain any discussion or motion.
Move approval. Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, item seven, reaffirmation and ratification carries unanimously as well. Item number eight is our consent agenda, I'll ask if there's any member of staff or council that would like to have any of the items removed from the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, any further discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, the consent agenda passes unanimously. We have, looks like, four public hearings this evening, to introduce our first public hearing, I'll call upon our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Guest, members of the city council, Mr. Swanson, first public hearing is consideration of the voluntary contiguous annexation of 12.45 acres located at 2301 21st Avenue Northeast, owned by the city of Hickory, and be presented by Planning Director Brian Frazier.
Thank you, sir, Mayor Guest, members of council, Mr. Wood, Mr. Swanson, good evening. As Mr. Wood indicated, that is not the right power. Okay, so for the voluntary annexation, this is for the proposed Sandy Pines Park, you can see the proposed annexation area hashed in red, for whatever reason, when the city bought this property numerous years ago, it wasn't annexed into the city proper, so that needed to be done, as I think Natalie Jackson came on behalf of Mark Seaman and Parks and Rec a couple of weeks ago, talked to you about the Sandy Pines master plan, so this is, this is just a follow-up of that. So here in white, you can see the whitish blue is the city limits, and this, of course, is the annexation area, and the yellow is the extraterritorial jurisdiction. And here on this map, you can clearly see the zoning, this is predominantly R3, medium density residential, you've got some higher density residential here to the north and west, and then you've got some Commercial Corridor 1 down in the lower right to the Again, this is the aerial photo of the property, again, to the north is the orientation, and just to get your bearings, this is 29th Avenue Drive Northeast, this would be heading into town, this would be going south toward McDonald Parkway, the 40 and the 70 corridor. So the staff finds in the recommendation, we believe that the voluntary annexation petition complies with all applicable statutes, adequate public services are available, and the annexation of the property will not cause public services to fall below acceptable levels, of course, the reason, the rationale for the annexation is to connect to city utilities at such time that the current vacant park is developed for public recreational use. So based upon these findings, staff respectfully recommends approval of the requested annexation, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Frazier? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is one of our first public hearings of the evening, we'll have four, but the rules pertain to all four of them equally the same, we allow up to 15 minutes for anyone who would like to speak in opposition of our public hearing, in this case, it was the annexation that you just heard described by Mr. Frazier. We also allow the same amount of time, up to 15 minutes, for anyone who would like to speak in favor of the proposal. We will allow up to five minutes for rebuttal and surrebuttal if necessary, and once again, if you speak, we would ask you to give your name and your address. So at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open, and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of the annexation you've just heard described by Mr. Frazier. There being no one desiring to speak in opposition, I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. There being no one desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and ask if there's any further discussion or motion from council.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That annexation carries unanimously. To follow up on that, our second public hearing this evening, once again, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Guest, second public hearing is consideration of rezoning petition 24-09 for property located at 2301 21st Avenue Northeast, owned by the city of Hickory, will also be presented by Planning Director Brian Frazier.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. So again, the property size is about 12 and a half acres, currently zoned, as mentioned, medium density residential with the surrounding Sandy Pines subdivision. The request is to rezone the property to office institutional. Two years ago, this coming December, we pretty much did it. We rezoned just about all, if not all, of the city existing parks to an O&amp;I designation. A lot of them had been designated residential and, you know, there was certain perspectives out there when the Hickory, when Hampton Heights Golf Course was sold. People thought that it wasn't only a public course, but that it was a municipal course, which of course, we know, of course, we know isn't correct. So people thought that anywhere else that had a city park designation of R1, R2, 3 or 4, that we were going to sell it and, which we can't do because it's tied to federal and state money and it would just be poor practice anyway. So we just looked for a designation without going the full-blown parks route, which would, you know, lock us in. So all the parks basically have been rezoned to office and institutional for the past two years. You can see in the hatch, again, the Sandy Pines Park. And this is the future land use plan. You can see community, commercial, and then higher density residential, and then the transitional district from 1 to 2 to the R3, the medium density residential district again to the north. This is 29th Avenue Drive heading towards McDonald Parkway. This is the current zoning of the site, R4, which is high density residential, medium density residential, and then there's a commercial corridor use. Right here in the bottom right corner, you can, it's Springs Road Northeast. And the aerial map, this is the Sandy Pines Park site. For perspective, this is McDonald Parkway. There's the existing Walgreens and the Walmart Neighborhood Market. Now Starbucks is here and here's the Sheetz Store, gas station. So according to Hickory by Choice 2030, the area is classified as a city park. The plan states that parks in the city include neighborhood parks, district parks, passive open space. So the current recreation master plan adopted by this council a few months back identifies numerous improvements to the existing parks and recreation facilities. So to accommodate the projected growth patterns that we're seeing here in the city, we needed another park, both in the southern and the northeastern portions of the city, hence Sandy Pines in the northeast portion of the city, which is just under 13 acres east of Sandy Ridge Road Northeast. So again, the O&amp;I district is a transitional area between residential and commercial that allows such uses as parks and rec areas. This will keep in providing a balance or a transitional area for zoning between residential development and open space. So staff recommends that the petition 2409, we believe that to be consistent with Hickory by Choice. And staff recommends, well, the planning commission conducted a public hearing back on May 22nd. During the public hearing, we had one person speak in favor, one speaking in opposition, just that there was a concern that the park would be sold, platted for residential subdivision and they didn't want to see that. So upon closing the hearing, the planning commission acknowledged the consistency and voted unanimously eight to zero to recommend approval. Staff does concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and I'd be happy to address any questions you may have tonight about the rezoning.
Any questions for Mr. Frazier? Thank you again, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, once again, this is a public hearing. The same rules apply. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of this annexation request that you've just heard described by Mr. Frazier. There being no one desiring to speak in opposition, I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. There being no one desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion or discussion.
Move approval, rezoning? Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That annexation carries unanimously. I'm sorry, rezoning. All right, for our third public hearing, once again, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Guest. Third public hearing is consideration of the rezoning directing the street improvement project be undertaken for curb and gutter petition 2401 for property located at 525 9th Avenue Northwest and be presented by public works director Steve Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Guest, members of council, Mr. Swanson, Mr. Wood. I would like to, a footnote to history there with the presentation from Frye tonight. My great-grandfather was actually the first patient ever at Frye. He had his arm called in a cotton gin not too far from here, which is just a weird thing for, to be up tonight. So I'm before you tonight with a very simple curb and gutter petition. It's located at 525 9th Avenue Northwest. And as you can see, there's a little draw in there, there's two circular drive that they currently have now and there is not curb and gutter currently in front of this residence, so they have applied for a petition process. This is the house, as you can see, it's a cute little home. They're on 9th Avenue Northwest and they're having a little bit of a drainage issue as the water runs down the street. You can see they've added some stone there in front of the, between the two driveways. So they have petitioned for curb and gutter and they can do that as a one-party petition, but as they, as curb, they are just to the, would be the west of the property and we will go uphill to the top of the property if council approves the petition. It will be approximately about $3,000 will be the cost to the homeowner. We won't know that number exactly until we see how we tie in the two circular drives, but if approved by council, then it will come back. Once we build and constructed, it would come back for assessment. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Miller?
Mr. Miller, is there curb, is there gutter east of this property that it will connect to like there is west of it here in the bottom of the photo?
There is not on the top end. So the way that the curb and gutter petitions work, if you're a corner property or if there is existing property, you can be a one-party petition because you're just connecting to an existing piece. It would be great if it would continue up the street, but this time that's a vacant lot and I don't know that the folks that own it want to do that this time.
Do you think, I don't know if you've looked at it, will putting it, one section of the curb and gutter in there, will it cure the water problem that they're having or is it going to enter from above that and come down?
No, that'll solve their issue at this particular property. The other property has a wooded lot and the water stays in the street currently pretty easy.
Okay, all right.
It just keeps, the way they, if you look at their driveway there, they've had to hump them up to keep water from going down. The house sits below the street. This will solve that problem 1,000%.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Perhaps we could get a placate for I commemorating your great-great-grandfather. The first patient, that's got to be something.
Yeah, there was a cool article in the Hickory Daily Record when I was in high school about it, so that's why I remember it so well.
We need to frame that and put it somewhere at Frye. I'll make that, I'll make that recommendation since, since we've got the boss here. All right, I digress, I'm sorry. Once again, this is a public hearing. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of this curb and gutter petition that you've just heard described by Mr. Miller. There being no one desiring to speak in opposition, I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. There being no one desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion or discussion.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? All right, that carries unanimously as well. All right, this is the moment everybody's been sitting on the edge of their seat for. So at this time, I will introduce our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood, who will be presenting our 2024-2025 recommended budget for the city of Hickory.
Thank you, Mayor Guest. As part of the statutory process for adopting the annual budget, this is the required public hearing, so here will be a presentation of what's contained in it. And you can ask questions as we go through or, and at the end if you like. So I know we spent a lot of time talking about all the transformational projects that we've got with the bond programs and all these transportation projects and the Aviation Museum, that sort of thing, but, and those are transformational, but this is what we do every day. This is what, these items are just examples of what we do on an annual basis that is funded through your annual budget. Most of those big projects are funded through capital projects that come separately. So you can see the amount of tons that solid waste disposes of every year with refuse and yard waste and the water lines. They've got 954 miles of water lines. There's 120,000 customers that we serve in the Catawba Valley. There's also about 450 miles of sewer line that we maintain. And then the fire calls, the police calls, the potholes repaired and the one that, you know, kind of blew me away, all of them, but I had no idea that it was over 300,000 items borrowed from the library. And we're one of just a handful of cities, a handful of cities in the state that has its own library system. So it's, it's very popular. So just a few general highlights that people always like to focus on initially. So the property tax rate for the coming year is recommended to be unchanged at 45.5 cents per hundred dollars valuation. We had a revaluation this past year, so this was the new tax rate that y'all set effective July 1st of this current year that we're in. It was 62.75 cents, so it came down quite a bit. The water and sewer fund, we're recommending a 5% increase in the water volume and sewer volume on your bill. That would have the effect of, on the average household bill of about a dollar 86 per month. So obviously, we've had inflationary changes and pressures that we continue to see. Couple of years ago, we had a 10% increase in the volume side, so this isn't as drastic as that was. So that will be a recommended part of the budget. And additionally, your solid waste fee funds your solid waste operation, so we're recommending a dollar increase in that to a total of $28 a month. That $28 a month covers all the operational side of residential collection. We contract for recycling, your yard waste, white goods, junk goods. So all those are combined in the, in solid waste operation and, you know, pretty much there are some things we don't take, but I'll say pretty much if you put it to the curb, it disappears. I get all kinds of compliments from folks that move here from somewhere else where they don't have that level of service. And also, those guys, and gals, only get Christmas Day off for a holiday. They work every other, every other holiday and a lot of weekends.
Mr. Wood, does any of that money go to subsidize the collection of the hazardous wastes that we have once or twice a year?
Yes, all the, all the staff that we use for that is all paid for through solid waste and we take it to the landfill.
Thank you.
They got a special way to get rid of it. All right, so here is the recommended budget by fund. We, we do fund accounting, so we, most of the services that we provide that really don't produce enough revenue to support themselves are in the general fund and that's what your property tax dollars go towards. Police, fire, library, Parks and Rec, city manager's office, planning, all those things that don't really produce a lot of revenue to support their operations are housing, the general fund is subsidized by the property tax rate. So there's about an 8% increase there against some inflationary pressures there, but we're not going up on, we're going up a little bit on the fee schedule. I'll talk about one of those in particular, but most of the other items are going to stay the same in terms of fees. Water and sewer funds going up 2% and I'm not going to go through all of them, but the general fund and water and sewer make up about 75, 80% of your overall budgetary activity in the general fund. That's where your two largest operations are in terms of the funds, the insurance funds and internal service fund. The sludge composting facilities or fund, you see a 15% increase. They're buying some capital equipment and there's also going to be a transition from the old facility to the new facility, so some of that will work itself out next year. And the other big one is the water and sewer capital reserve. At the bottom, you see a 42.7% increase. Well, that is, if you remember, last year we adopted and are effective in the current year, the system development fees that we call capacity fees. So when a new development comes on, they have to pay a fee to account for the value of the capacity that they're taking out of the system. And we in turn take that money, put it in the capital reserve fund and ultimately work to replace that capacity that is, now that's incremental over time. We don't expand the water plant every time somebody taps on, but we put all that in a fund and the system development fees, and those are calculated by a firm that goes around the state and there's a statutory way to do it. And you adopted what they recommended and it is really producing a good amount of revenue for us to put back into, in capital on the water and sewer side. The water and sewer fund is extremely capital intensive. If you can see this, so this is on the revenue side. If you look just at the whole budget together, we put different types of revenues in different buckets. Obviously, ad valorem is the second single largest type of revenue we have, 39 and a half million. Sales and services, that's everything that we charge for, water and sewer, solid waste, hangar, hangar revenue at the airport and all those things that there's a fee associated with, goes in sales and services. The third largest category is other taxes, that'll be your sales taxes and taxes typically that come through the state, state collects and redistributes to us. Other financing sources, one of the things that's included in there, not this year, but is debt financing. We're not doing any debt financing this year. So that, those are, another thing that's in that category are capital reserve transfers, we're moving money to do a project or maybe also some things related to some of our internal service funds. So, but we're not doing any debt financing, new debt financing in the current upcoming year. On the expenditure side, so this is how we categorize things, spending, so public safety as an example, obviously that's police and fire. Environmental protection is going to be water and sewer, solid waste, stormwater, those sorts of things. General government, looks like a big number, but a lot of our internal service fund, our fleet is an internal service fund. If, you know, if a department takes a vehicle down there, that department gets charged, but that's an internal exchange. Our health insurance is in it, in an internal service fund as, as an example. And also just our landscape services is in the general government category. Those are the three largest. You can see the other, Culture and Recreation, Library and Parks and Rec. So you can see the breakout there. So when you go through your goals and objectives in the annual, listed in the annual budget, there's, there's about five themes that come out of that. And so, so in putting the budget together, we'll kind of walk through how these five themes in your goals and objectives play out. So enhance our livability, that's quality of life, you know, population growth, and we also want to grow our local economy. And all these things are tied together. These things do not work independent of one another. They are all dependent on each other and interconnected. Obviously, a core thing we want to do is maintain and improve our infrastructure. You read these horror stories on other communities that have, you know, real challenges going on, so you got to stay ahead of the game with that. And a new one that has emerged and we've talked about, so protect our most important natural resource, which is the Catawba River, and that's got a lot of different components. So let's just talk about some of those. So enhancing our livability, obviously, as we talked about, the core services we provide, that's what we come to work to do every day. We do all these other projects and they're exciting and, but what we do every day, we measure that against other local governments in larger cities around the state to see how we compare and what we're doing to what they're doing. And we've had people call us about some of our numbers and, you know, how did you get, you know, this good at that? And we've called other people, what sorts of changes y'all have made and make improvements there. So there's a lot of communication that goes back and forth between cities. We, we benchmark almost every service that we provide against those other cities. And the UNC, University of North Carolina School of Government runs that and that, we've been a part of that project for, I mean, it's probably 25 years. So there's a lot of trend information that goes along with that as well. So that, we always want to work to improve and that's, you know, but the basic service delivery that we do to citizens, we always want to work to improve that. You know, when the bond projects were first, the concept of the bond program first came about, we wanted to attract and retain a workforce, you know, we wanted to improve our quality of life and, you know, obviously the interconnectivity of a trail system was the foundation of that as well as Trivium Corporate Center. So that's also enhancing our livability. I think we're seeing, what Dr. Green said as an example, I mean, it's easier to sell Hickory today than it was 25 years ago, so we're seeing the benefits of that. Obviously, city walks complete, river walks complete, historic ridge view walk as well under construction, aviation walk... under construction, Aviation Walk is well underway. And also, the Historic Ridge View Walk's going to be expanded, the crosswalk from Fourth Street across Seventy to the Walmart Neighborhood Grocery Store there, there's going to be another piece of that that's going to eventually be added to that. And the Aviation Walk is also going to be expanded to, from Seven, we're extending Seventeenth Street that runs in front of ASU Hickory, and with that will be a ten-foot wide multimodal path that will come down and tie into the Aviation Walk. And also, the Aviation Museum, there's a project funded to tie the Aviation Museum into the Aviation Walk. So that's, over time, you're going to see where there's opportunities to expand and have connectivity and loop the, the trail system. That's what, that's what we're going to be doing. So Ole Art Walk, I say it's under construction, it's under contract. We will, I'm sure we'll know when it's under construction. So Trivium Corporate Center, the west side is complete, there's still a lot, a few lots to be sold. Trivium East is the hundred and eight acres on the west east side, and that, there's some infrastructure, if I said all that right, there's some infrastructure that's going in on the east side on that hundred and seven or eight acres. So that's also being marketed, so that's been a tremendous success. Population growth, in North Carolina, there's a hundred counties, a third of them are growing, and the rest of them either are not growing or declining in population, and that's not where you want to be. You talk about workforce and, you know, clients for your business and customers for your business, I mean, you know, just, the city, cities are just like a business. You need growth. You have to replace the population that, you know, either moves on or dies. So there's a, there's a growth goal for us, unofficial. We say, you know, ideally, one and a half, two percent growth a year. I mean, if that's around eight hundred people a year, that's very manageable. It's not explosive growth like you see in some communities that becomes hard to, to manage. Our, our current population's forty-four thousand four hundred. Census, we're at forty-three thousand four hundred, so that's about a two percent increase over three years. But you know, with all the rezaunings and annexations that you've done, there is, there are residential units in the pipeline that will get us up to that one and a half to two percent population growth rate. If you approve a three-hundred unit subdivision, that doesn't happen in one year, that happens over a number of years. So it's all, all incremental. And the good thing we're seeing about the residential side, we're seeing a really good mix, a single-family, multifamily, townhomes, market rate, and low to moderate income. So we're seeing an array of, of product that is coming online here in Hickory.
How many, how many units do we have in the works right now?
There's sixteen hundred, there, just as an example, so Hampton Heights, whatever the name of that, there's three hundred and fifty plus or minus units, so like that, but the site work's being done, there's about sixteen hundred that are kind of in that phase. So again, once the site work's done, it's going to be a period of years that that sixteen hundred will come online. We had about, the last three years, I think we had six hundred single, six hundred residential units permitted. You'll see that number increase to where we're getting, you know, if it's two point three people per household, whatever the math is on that, that's probably about where we're going to end up. So grow our local economy. We've done really well on the commercial industrial side. Over the past three years, there've been seventy-eight new commercial industrial projects permitted. There's been seven hundred and twenty-five renovations and expansions. So together, these projects totaled over half of, five hundred and fifty million dollars. And there's, I think it was two point six million dollars under roof, two point six million square feet under roof during that time. So we've seen really good activity on that front as well. And I looked at some building permitting numbers today. The last two years, we did about two hundred and forty million dollars in building permitting, each of the last two years. This year, we'll probably do a little bit better than that. So typically, before we started the bond program, we were looking at a hundred million dollars in permitting. So it's really, that's what, is a lot of what's driving it. So this is outside of our annual budget, but this is important. So we have a, all these projects are funded, and most all of them, except for a couple, have been awarded and or are under construction. Springs, Springs Road Sidewalk has not been, Sandy Ridge Road Roundabout hasn't been. But we've had, between the bond program and transportation-related projects, most of those are transportation-related, we have been able to secure a hundred million dollars in federal and state funding for our projects, and that's bond program and all these road projects. So we've done, we, we were fortunate in that we had a lot of the planning done, and all this money started coming into the system. Now, that's going to dry up, but we hit it at a really good time by having plans on the shelf and ready to go with these projects. So the timing, the way it worked, I know people have been frustrated about how long some of the bond stuff has taken, but it actually worked by our advantage because we were able to leverage the forty million dollars on a lot of those projects and, and get a hundred million. There's also some of that hundred million and some stuff at the airports, and projects at the airport as well, but all our transportation efforts have paid dividends. And also, the NC DOT has five hundred and fifty million dollars of projects programmed in Hickory that are in the ten-year window, and those are funded, so. And that, so John Marshall on the city side is, John's, he's worked his magic, I don't know, he's got this combination to be able to unlock these monies. So having him on board has been a tremendous asset, particularly for a lot of these transportation-related projects, so been very fortunate. I'm glad you don't work on commission.
Don't give him any ideas.
Two at the bottom, the Hickory Metro Convention Center, that is all funded by the hotel motel occupancy tax, like city tax dollars don't go into that per se, but that's funded by the hotel motel occupancy tax. A new biosolids facility, you'll remember, that was a point, it was one-tenth of one percent interest rate that we got on that, so that was about as close to free money being able to borrow as you can get. And then the Aviation Museum, we have a combination of state money and some fundraising into that. So that, those are exciting projects. You know, I talked about, you, I think there was a story about Atlanta and their Water and Sewer System, and I know Charlotte's had some of those stories. You've got to maintain your infrastructure because it's expensive to maintain even when you're staying, keeping pace, but when you fall behind, it's even, just like your house. I mean, you let something go, I've done it, you let something go, and then eventually, you know, you've got to pay a big bill to get it back up to speed. So that's what we don't do here. So Water and Sewer Maintenance is about two million annually, and we may have some larger individual projects. This is like what we spend annually. You know, we may have a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar pump at the, at the water plant that is done through a different type of process, but this is just the ongoing Water and Sewer Maintenance, our building maintenance, about, you know, nine hundred thousand. Street resurfacing's a million dollars, and our sidewalk maintenance, and it's also new sidewalk construction with that, but that's that five-dollar vehicle fee that everybody pays when you pay your tax bill on your vehicle. But that five dollars goes into a fund for sidewalk maintenance.
How many miles of that million dollars for street resurfacing?
About eight lane miles a year.
Eight, eight hundred years, according to how much, we, we always try to build, and we take it back to the original, so we don't lose like the original pavement in Go, in Go area. So it can vary from eight to ten.
It's like, example, so the, the road in front of the Highland Rec Center, that one is very expensive to resurface because it's so wide, you know, but like Tony Street, it was not as much. I mean, so to Steve's point, though, the lane miles are a little bit misleading because of how wide the street is, so. That's not, go ahead.
Single lane versus a four lane?
Yeah.
Am I correct that, I don't think I dreamed this, but we have as many roads to maintain in Hickory that would go from end to end on the state of North Carolina? Didn't somebody tell me that?
It's.
It's about four hundred and thirty-seven lane miles of, they've lost, can go wholly to that, you know.
Yes, a single lane mile, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. It's a lot. And, you know, this is rising to the surface very quickly, so obviously, the Catawba River, our region's the most important natural asset that we have, and we're going to, I think as a matter of policy, council adopted a resolution, we're going to oppose anybody trying to take water out of the Catawba River and put it in another river. But along with that, we are working, currently, we're doing study and engineering work to figure out how to create more treatment capacity. We don't have a, we have a one intake and one water plant, and that's our Plan A, B, and C. I mean, there's, we, that is why it's so important that we develop a, a real Plan B. And we've had issues where, you know, we've had a major leak, and part of the system drains out, or we're able to refill, but we haven't had a situation where the, the water plant itself has had any issues. But we've reached, we've reached the size that we now need to think about additional planning for storage capacity, system interconnectivity. There's, I think there's five jurisdictions in our region that draw water out of the Catawba that have their own water plant, Morganton Valdez, Lenore, Granite Falls, and Hickory. And we're not interconnected, or at least to the, we may be interconnected, but not to the degree that where if somebody had a problem, we could help them, or they could help us get enough water to really, so that, that interconnectivity, and I've talked with the other managers, I think Lenore just had a project funded to connect with Valdez, so that, that is starting to happen. And that is part of the, you know, Plan B scenario. We had a situation where Newton does not draw out of the Catawba, they have an impoundment that they draw, a big pond, and they had some issues with some heavy rains, and it was the mud, they couldn't treat the water. So there was, we were able to help them, but they wouldn't necessarily be able to help us if something happened to us, just the way the hydraulics work, so. And, you know, educating the public about the importance of the Catawba River, and that's the Environmental Education Center. There are so many intricacies about the way the river, and you've heard, you heard Jeff Leinberg from Duke Energy came, that's just the tip of the iceberg, educating the public, you know, from a young age to an old age on how the river system works, the lake system that Duke manages, you know, what it means to our region, is important that every, that people have an understanding and appreciation of what that river means to us.
And I would, I think the next meeting about the Charlotte IBT is July fifteenth.
Is that, is it?
Morgan.
Miss Morgan.
From six to eight, so I would encourage everyone to, to go.
Yeah.
And they did say there'd be another one in Hickory at some time.
Well, I've suggested that, and we had a meeting, so you need to spread it around the region, it can't just be Hickory getting all these meetings, so they decided to go to Morganton, which will be good. Because I know the people came all the way from McDowell County and Lake James, so, you know, there's a big interest up in down the river system.
And, and once again, in its simplest form, they want to take water out of the Catawba, not put it back, but when I ask the question, they can take it out, but put it back, but it would cost them. And so they just want to take water out for free.
Right. That's, so they're growing, so Charlotte's, that's a great point, because Charlotte's in two river basins, they're in the Catawba River Basin, which is where their three water plants are. They don't have a water plant, they're also in the Yadkin PD on the east side of town, and they don't have a water plant on the east side. But, so they're, they're, they don't want to build one, but, so the, the easy solution is take the water out of the Catawba and put it on the, and sell it to residents on the east side, then it goes back into the Yadkin. Right now, they, they have an IBT interbasin transfer of thirty-three million gallons a day, so they're able to put thirty-three, up to thirty-three million gallons a day of the Catawba water into the Yadkin PD already, and they want another thirty million. We're saying, either, you know, either financially, y'all need to, you know, do what you need to do to come with the money to either pump it back to the Catawba or build a new water plant, or Mother Nature's telling you, you, you've reached the point where you shouldn't be going anymore on that side. I mean, it's, that's about, that's it.
So, so you were talking about system development fees earlier, and it sounds like our citizens, that we've been, you know, getting them to invest in the infrastructure that it takes to secure our water, or to, you know, to establish water security for us. Is Charlotte doing, are they doing system development fees to, in anticipation of this?
Apparently not.
Okay.
And they can, and with some, I met with some legislators, and I told them that y'all, the legislature has already given everybody the tool to, to make sure that as capacity comes off their system with new development, that there's a pot of money that's put in place to replace it. I mean, and obviously, I would, based on them wanting to do an IBT, they haven't been putting enough water or money aside to build a new water plant. So, but the tool is there, and one of two things are going to happen. The price of the, of the system development fees, they're going to be so high that it's going to stop growth, or it's going to raise enough revenue to do what they need to do by building a plant or pumping it back, so.
Well, what you said earlier about, you know, when you get behind, it becomes even harder, it's expensive, well, forgive me for this, but I read in an article that Charlotte Water's a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars underwater this year already. So they're, they're really working out the hole, so.
And if they have not, I mean, I know, the citizens don't like to hear about fees increasing, but I feel like we have done a good job with your leadership of doing the projects that we need to do to maintain and take care of our growth, whereas we shouldn't be penalized because of Charlotte's lack of planning.
Yeah. And where those IBTs really impact you during drought, because, you know, right now it's raining, and nobody's thinking about a drought, but we've been through droughts and some serious droughts, that's where those IBTs, because they don't have to cut back on their discharge out of, from the Catawba into the, into the Yadkin. It also impacts over time, everybody else's ability to get their, you have to get permitted, like, we're permitted to take thirty-two million gallons a day out of the Catawba, we do about half of that, or less than half. But when we reach a point where we, in the future, where we want to take, increase that thirty-two million to forty-two, or whatever it is, well, they look at a formula, and with all these IBTs, and the fact that they're downstream from us has nothing to do with it. So, so that's a lot to think about there. So here's some other annual budget, I just wanted to put it out there. So we've talked about downtown parking, so we've had a five-dollar, now, this is a parking violation citation. This is not, you're having to pay to park downtown. So we've had, if you go over, there's, as an example, on Union Square, there's a three-hour parking limit, you know, Monday through Friday from eight to five. It's been five dollars forever. So we're recommending that go to fifteen, because what we're seeing is particularly, the way I understand it, the employees that work downtown, basically, they're willing to pay five dollars a day to park on Union Square. And it takes up spaces for customers, and y'all get complaints, and we get complaints, but there's also free parking downtown that people, particularly that work downtown and others, could take advantage of. So maybe we'll see if people are willing to pay fifteen dollars a day to park for more than three hours. I mean, three hours is pretty generous, and plus, again, you have the free parking as well, but that's for parking violation citations. That is not, we're not charging to park downtown, but just if you go over the time limit.
Which is, which is unique to the city of Hickory, because most other cities you travel to, you pay to park, and you pay a parking violation if you go over the limit.
I know, just as an example, I was talking to Jason Yates, I mean, he polices his staff, he does not let them park on Union Square. They have to park in a, in a free spot, I mean, he, he's an example of.
Somebody doing it right.
Yeah. And I'm not, I'm just saying, that's, that's what, when, when we write tickets, that's the feedback that I get. The majority of the tickets are, just as an example, on Union Square, are to people that work on Union Square, so.
How long has our parking violation fee been? Five dollars?
It's been ever since I've been here. I don't know, have y'all ever known it to be more than anything other than five? So that's at least nineteen ninety-three, so.
I know when I was at Appalachian, I think nineteen seventy-two, it was ninety-nine dollars for.
When Steve's great-great-grandfather was here, you could park your horse downtown for?
Well, you used to have the parking meters downtown, so.
I'm sorry, Steve, I've never forgotten.
And that's the next, that's the next point, so, you know, we've talked about having hourly paid parking downtown, we're not doing that, but, so our recommendation is to wait, we've got Novotaf Run, One-Eleven Main, Every Age across the street, there's some other stuff. So let's let some of these get developed and see where our pressure points are for parking. Some of those are going to have parking that come with them, so it, it would be premature to determine which lots we may want to charge for until we get a little, it, it may happen sooner, but right now, we would just recommend, let's let some of this build up, and then we'll, we'll see where the pressure points are. Merit pay for employees, if you exceed, for a city of Hickory employee, if you exceed standards on your performance evaluation, so you have a, everybody has a work plan, and they have a performance evaluation every year to evaluate how well they did, meeting what the goals were in the work plan, so if you meet your performance evaluation standards, it's four percent, if you exceed, it's five percent. We've seen, we've seen some improvement in recruitment. Last year at this time, we were eighty employees down, and now we're about sixty, so I mean, that's, doesn't sound, but that, every little bit helps, so I think that is, and in the region, it's getting a little better, so hopefully, some of that is starting to alleviate. Obviously, we Obviously, we still see inflation, inflationary prices on, you know, chemicals and, and natural gas, power, gas, I mean, all the things that we, concrete, building materials, all that, so, and long wait times for special equipment and vehicles and special supplies, supplies, like as an example, the police department was going to have to wait a year to get what they would typically get, so if you see police cars that have a different color, it's because those are the ones we can get. So I don't know if they've been rolled out yet, but, okay. So anyway, that's just an example, but because we have to, we can't not replace vehicles, so they're, they're still going to look good, they're just going to be a little bit, have a different look. So, so we're still seeing that. And, you know, one of the, just as a final slide, one of the fundamental indicators of how well a city is doing or not doing, that they look at is very simple, it's your unassigned fund balance in the general fund, that's basically your savings account. If you think of your savings account at home, you got X number of dollars, it's not earmarked for anything necessarily, so you can see what had happened. So from two thousand nineteen, we had a twenty million dollar fund balance, and then it dropped down, and it usually builds back up a little bit every year, but it went down and stayed down. We were using money out of fund balance for the matches related to those grant monies that we got. Now, some of it was the bond money, but we also had to use some general fund money, so that's what you're seeing those three years, and then you, you saw some improvement this past year. Your unofficial, or your, no, your official goal for a fund balance as percent of the general fund budget is twenty-five percent, you're at about thirty. So, so you've got a healthy, so that, bottom line is, you have a healthy, Danny's doing the math in his head over there, maybe, I think it's thirty-two point something, but, but you've got a thirty, and our fund balance goal used to be thirty, but years ago, we reduced it to twenty-five, but, but anything in that range, and that's basically three months' worth of having money in the bank. If, if all your revenue dried up, you got three months' worth of money. I want to give you the last slide. That's one of my favorite pictures. Any questions, comments?
I don't have a question, but obviously, this is a very comprehensive and intensive process, and I know a lot of our coworkers contribute to putting this together, and I just want to thank everybody for an outstanding job in, in putting all this together. And just remind those of you in the audience, or those of you that may be listening, this, this is not the first interaction that we've had with this budget. Obviously, the members of council and staff have had several opportunities to review and discuss and hash out and have conversations with the various departments as to get it to where it is today. And we have this also available for members of the public that would like to, to look at it, it'll be available, I think it's at the libraries, if I'm correct on that, and it'll probably also be online.
Online libraries.
So it is, it is a public document, it is, at this point, it is a recommended budget, it is proposed, and shortly, we'll be opening a public hearing if anybody wants to make a comment either against it or for it. But there's a lot of work that goes into this, and obviously, it's a fluid document until it's approved, and a lot of work.
And I want to thank Mr. Wood for answering all of my questions and budget, appreciate the time.
Thank you.
I certainly agree with the parking raise in price, will discourage some of the workers.
I just want to say, we get a lot of accolades about quality of service, level of service, and just some of the things you covered, including the foresight of leadership and staff that brought us to this point in terms of our bond projects and leveraging other state and federal monies. So really, I think so much of the accolades go to the directors and management staff here. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad that the mayor mentioned that this is a public document, and realizing that, not knowing who would come to voice their concerns against it, and there being a five percent increase letting me know that the city understands the growth that is taking place, and so I want to say, I haven't received any complaints. I don't know if I go back to a meeting and someone says something about the dollar increase for their garbage, but, but it just shows that the city as, as a whole understands the growth that is taking place.
All right, and I would like to, Rodney Miller, I'd get to sit up here and do the presentation, but he's, he's, he goes and does the work with the department heads, and the department heads put a lot of work in their staff, and all the capital requests and operational, I mean, he goes department to department and puts all this together. He does what I used to do when I, I used to know what I did. But, so appreciate Rodney and all the department heads, and also in our office, I know Yadee Crystal, Iris, Brianna Iker, Jonathan Rosales, so putting this, this presentation really condensed it to a point that people can, they just wind me up and then I just present it, but I appreciate all their work too.
All right. Any other questions or concerns or discussion, Mr. Wood? Aye.
Oh, just an observation, you ever notice the final budget's about five times thicker than the.
We thought people would be more likely to read it if it looked more friendly.
All right. This will be our last public hearing, so at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of this recommended, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five recommended budget presented by our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood. Aye. There being no one wishing to speak in opposition, I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. This probably doesn't happen in too many municipalities. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion or any further discussion.
Move approval of the recommended budget.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? All right, the budget carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is departmental reports, I'll ask if there's any member of council that would like to make any appointments this evening to our vacancies on our boards and commissions. All right, no appointments this evening. As those of you who are here can see, we do have some vacancies, and if you're interested in learning anything else or more about those, you can see any of your council members, or you can go online and see some more information pertaining to not just these, but to all of our boards and commissions. Uh, let's see, next on the agenda is matters not on the agenda, anything that you want to add this evening, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any general comments by our council members or staff?
Uh, two things. I didn't get a chance to do this the first time that he came to a city council meeting, but, and this meeting happened to be a little bit longer than the other one. But one, a welcome, Reverend Steve Carwell, who prayed earlier, who's still here, he's one of, now I can say he's the new kid on the block, he used to be me, but he is the new pastor of Mount Zion Baptist Church, and we want to say welcome to the city of Hickory.
Yes, sir.
Also want to say thank you to the mayor and to the city manager and to the chief of police for sending regards, and the mayor's presence for attending my ten-year pastoral anniversary in appreciation of being in the city of Hickory for ten years. So I appreciate that, being a pastor now and a city councilman, I like to be in control, so instead of losing my hair, I just figure I cut it all off, so I'm in control of that.
Well, since you said that, I'll, I'll just add this, the meal at your ten-year anniversary was certainly worth it. I'll just leave it at that. The meal there was fantastic, that his congregation served, so I enjoyed it very much.
I got two things.
Okay.
So first is, so Arneeta Dula has announced her retirement effective end of this month, so we appreciate, Arneeta's had eighteen years with the city and sixteen with, well, my advocates didn't go up that much, so it was.
Eighteen with the city, you know, it was eighteen.
Yeah, yeah, so thirty-six, pretty much thirty-six years with the city, or with, in local, in local and state government, so I appreciate Arneeta's time here. We're going to have a reception for her at your next, before your next council meeting, so we're excited about that. So I'm losing, I was telling, say, Arneeta, she's my spiritual advisor. Now, she doesn't, she doesn't do very good, but she tries hard, she's not very, she tries hard, but.
She's me on my knees.
We can believe that.
Praying. But, so we appreciate Arneeta's service here with the city, I know that's hard to believe. And then, on the other end of that, so congratulations to Will Hamlin, appointed city's utility, public utilities director this past week, so in a red shirt, so he's a, he lives in Hickory with his, his family, and he's been with us for a few years, so we're excited about, about Will.
All right.
Something about being a red shirt guy that.
He's a Clemson guy.
Oh, oh.
Well, good thing he already got promoted, huh? I'm just kidding.
PE, he's a PE, God's engineering degree at Clemson.
Okay. Well, congratulations to both of you, one's, one's getting a new start and one's getting a new beginning, a new chapter to their life. I know that some years we go without any retirements or without any, anybody, you know, leaving us, and then other years, it seems that they come in threes and fours, and that's good opportunities to, for, for some folks that are, that are moving up in their careers, and it's a great opportunity for those that have served their entire career here at the city of Hickory, and we appreciate both of them and, and everybody that's, that's with us and, and working towards retirement. So thanks to each and every one of you.
Make sure you put it on your calendar for next council meeting.
Yeah, we will.
We'll send something out too.
We'll, we'll get that. All right.
I will be absent next council meeting, it's for a family get-together, so.
All right.
Hate to miss that.
We'll, we'll save your seat.
Okay.
We'll save your seat. Any other comments from council or staff? All right, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you for being here this evening.
Aye.
Have fun.